Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board on March 20th, 2017 at 5:12 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order and request roll call, please.
Bollig, Udrow.
Yes.
Rethauer.
Yes.
Carpenter.
Here.
Veneer. And State.
Here, thank you. Item three is review of 2017 capital borrowing in 2018 through 2022 capital improvement plan with finance advisor Jim Mann. We'll start with the memorandum and proceed through. Welcome. Good to see you, Jim.
Well, you have quite a list of projects that you've laid out, and we have put together a couple of options in terms of proceeding with the 2017 borrowing as well as looking out in the future through 2022. What we did is we have basically three concepts that are putting out there for discussion, first of which is financing the 2017 projects, including the purchase of the old land.
Methodist church.
Methodist church. For future municipal facility or potential municipal facility. Also financing 18 through 22's projects in the concepts. We also ran a second option that eliminated municipal buildings basically from the plan and just looks at the overall capital projects necessary just to maintain the existing infrastructure of the village. And then we ran a third option that looks at the municipal facilities on a much longer term of loan, basically working with the US Department of Agriculture through the Rural Development Program to finance the facilities, which would allow the village to finance those facilities over a 40-year period. Kind of boiling down, and it depends on how much detail you want me to get into, but boiling things down. In 2017, for debt service and for all the existing debt service that the village has outstanding for capital projects, et cetera, the average taxpayer, which has a home valued at about $257,000, had a tax burden of about $296, just less than 300. Option one, if you were to finance all of the projects over time, you would end up increasing that average homeowner burden to about $653 a year, which is about a $357 increase. The second option, which just says, okay, we're just going to maintain infrastructure, increases to about $477, which is about a $181 increase. And then if you look at financing the municipal facilities projects over a longer period of time, that reduces that option one down to about a $600, $598 burden or about a $300 increase. So it shifts, for options one and three, going out over a longer period of time for the municipal facilities, shifts the cost or reduces the cost on an annual basis by about $50. But over the life of the issues, you pay a lot more money because you're paying interest over a much longer period of time. But the upfront burden is somewhat less. If you just look at the capital projects that you have listed for 2017 through 2022, not including the municipal facilities, you're still looking at about a $180 increase on that average home. So it's kind of, when you look at the two facilities that are included, or the facilities that are included in the plan, which is a library facility and then potential senior center and potential village hall, those three items over this essential, you know, six-year planning window amount to about $12 million worth of debt. There isn't a way you're going to be able to add that amount of debt and not have it impact the taxpayers. So the question is, can A, are these the costs that we have to deal with in terms of these projects? B, do we have to do them in the succession that they're planned out in this plan? Do they all have to be done within this six-year period of time? That's not something I can answer for you. That's really a board discussion going forward. But you have, we have to decide essentially what we're planning to do in the 2017 borrowing right now. One of those items that is questionable in that borrowing is the purchase of the land that potentially could be for the library. It's about $900,000 included in that overall borrowing package. That $900,000 theoretically, if it is for the library, could be offset from some impact fee dollars that need to be spent by November of 2017. But at this point, you don't necessarily have the authorization to spend those impact fee dollars. An option would be to strip that $900,000 out of this borrowing and do that piece at a later point, perhaps through the state trust fund, which has liberal prepayment provisions. And then if a library project does move forward and you can use impact fees, you can pay down the debt right away. Whereas if you borrow through the open market, you're locked into that financing for a period of time, and you can use the impact fees to offset debt service, but you can't necessarily buy down the debt, the debt overall principal that's been issued in that timeframe. So that's kind of laying it out there in a nutshell. Couple of observational pieces, and I draw your attention to the graph that's included. I think it's about page four. The village is in a very good position to be walking into a project phase where you've got municipal facilities that need to be upgraded, because those are big-ticket items and they tend to be, and I always refer to them as legacy items. They're items that come around very infrequently. Unfortunately, they're all coming around at the same time for you. But it's not like every 10 or 15 or 20 years, you're going to have to be replacing these facilities. They tend to last a long period of time. This building was built in 19...
Forty-one.
Forty-one. Yes, there have been improvements to it, additions to it, but the main structure was built in 1941, so it's going to last a period of time. The library was built in 95, outgrown its facilities. But when you look at the charts and you look at the red shaded area, which is the existing debt, and this is the debt outstanding, there's about $12 million worth of debt outstanding, and you have a borrowing capacity of a little over $50 million. You're basically less than 25% of your borrowing capacity, and that's an enviable position to be in for most municipalities across the state of Wisconsin. If you look at just doing the capital improvement plan, the non-municipal facilities, which is the green shaded area, you climb to about 20 million, right around $20 million, you're still less than 50% of your borrowing capacity by quite a bit. Adding in the municipal buildings in the succession that we're talking about pops you over that 50% line for a few years. My concern is that this plan goes out to 2022, and presumably there would be additional projects already in 2023 that is going to keep you at that 50% line for a while. When we do financial planning and when we went through the process with the village, you want to, with the current rating that the village has, you really want to stay around that 50% trend line. You don't want to really pop up above that much, but there are municipalities that will go up to 75%. Lot of times that has to do with economic development initiatives. The concern that, and I've had this conversation with Mike and Lisa, is that this plan does not include any economic development initiatives. So if there are big initiatives that the village decides to undertake, which may be expansion of the industrial park, it may be going across Highway 14 for some commercial industrial-type work, there's costs associated with that that if you have to borrow the money for, we're going to start to approach that 75% line, and that becomes somewhat problematic. Now, if there is actual development that's occurring while we're doing that, we can explain that away with the rating agencies, but it is going to become a stressor on their maintaining of your current rating. So ideally, we stay around that 50% trend line so that that doesn't become a concern for those rating agencies. And the way this is laid out right now, you're going to pop above that 50% trend line for a period of time. If we do economic development initiatives, we're going to be perhaps a little higher than that. So it's something to be cognizant of as you make some of the decisions for funding of the municipal facilities projects. I think I would argue that everything in the green is probably darn close to being necessary, because you have to maintain the existing infrastructure that you have. So then it becomes a question of, for the municipal facilities, how much and when? When do you need to, you know, how much are you going to spend and when do you need to spend it by in terms of moving forward? And how does that fit in and whether you can stretch that out? And then it's a management of those economic development issues that you've got looming. So when you look at the plan, kind of the layout that we've said is that just doing the capital plan is going to cost you about $180, the average homeowner. And if you add in the municipal facilities in this timeframe, you're going to be somewhere between $300 and $360 increase total, so another 180 on top of the 180 as the maximum. And that's, you know, that's what the village board needs to wrestle with in terms of where they're willing to be. On the short term, we have to figure out what our borrowing package is going to be for 2017, whether we're going to include the library or the purchase of the old Methodist church property as part of that borrowing, or whether we're going to put that as a secondary obligation to be determined later.
So Jim, I'm not seeing your 180, but I'm in these numbers. Can you point, can you point to where that is? I'm seeing annual costs that start at 296 in 2017.
Yep, they all start at 296.
So where's the 180?
The 180 is what you've got to go up above the 296. If you look on page three, you've got three shaded, yellow shaded bars going across the page.
Yeah.
Those are the maximum increases financing all the capital projects. And the difference is basically the 181, if you look at option two, is $296 up to $477, the difference is $181.
Okay, I see. So my next question, I appreciated what you said about legacy building, and I appreciated what you said about historical timing. My opinion is that's exactly what we're talking about here, is we're kind of at the end of an 80-year cycle, and that's when capital improvement investment is made, partly because the recession has driven down interest rates to historic lows, and you want to take advantage of that, especially when you're borrowing, you know, 10, $15 million, that all matters. Part of it is because the recession has driven down the cost of construction to some extent because of the slowdown in construction, so cost of lumber, cost of maestri, you know, everything that goes along with it, labor. So you had said, when was this building built? It was 1941, not 1841. So the truth is, this building has gone about as far as it's going to go. I mean, there's some things we can do. The library's gone as far as it's going to go. There's really nothing we can do. We can throw good money after bad, that's about our only option at the library. And the senior center, pretty much the same thing, we could have conversations about that. So for me, it's important that we keep the focus on the responsibility that we have to build for the next 80 years of our community. That's just my voice. The math behind it, though, I have a, I come from banking, and so I can see that the prime lending rate is probably going to go up another 50 basis points this year. It's already gone up 25 basis points. That's a very narrow perspective on finance, and what I'm going to ask you to do is to project for me, I see rates here anywhere is between 180 and 250 as far as being able to borrow at 1.8 to 2.5%. Where do you see those going through this year and into next year if you had your crystal ball, which nobody has?
I think, the good news is, is that when the Fed plays with the, you know, the overnight rate, it doesn't equate to, you know, it just moved 25 basis points last week. It doesn't necessarily equate to a 25 basis point increase in the overall rate. And so we're looking at, and the Fed's made it relatively clear, that they're probably looking at another 50 basis point increase throughout 2017. That will probably not equate to 50 basis points increase in the overall interest rate, because there is still a fair amount of uncertainty in the long-term viability of this economy, that there isn't a lot that's driving long-term interest rates up. They're going to climb, because everything indexes off that overnight rate, but they're going to climb, but it's probably not 50 basis points. The issue is going to be what's going to happen after these next two rate increases, whether they're going to continue tightening the money supply so that it's, the interest rate goes up even further, and how far does it go? When you look at long-term interest rates, we are basically back to an average over the last five years. We're kind of at the average right now for the last five years. When you look at the last 30 years, we're still about a percent and a half below that average. So there's a lot of room for it to continue to index up and continue to go up. What, you know, what we've seen from recent history, though, there's still a lot of room for it to go down. We came off last year in August, record lows, where we were selling 20-year money for roughly 2%. We're not selling it for 2%, but we're not selling it for much more than 2% right now, 2 and 1/4, 2 and 1/2%. So I mean, it's, money is still very cheap right now. And, you know, I've always said that if you can borrow money at 3%, inflation will take care of that cost, and you're basically getting the money for free.
So we have a window here as a village where we're going to be able to borrow money at 3% or below. And when that window closes, it's going to close probably for a good, long period of time. Probably, well, if the 80-year cycle endures, right?
Yes.
It might close for another 80 years.
Probably wouldn't be 80 years, but it might be five or 10.
So how do you help people understand that there's going to be a pain associated with doing this, but that the pain of not doing it is greater? And I know I'm loading the question, and I apologize. If you don't agree with me, then please feel free to say so, because these are the questions that as a homeowner, I'm thinking to myself, man, I can't afford a $180 bump in my property taxes. I can't afford a $1 bump in my property taxes. At the end of the month, I got two pennies to rub together. So this isn't something anybody's going to sign up for because they have all that money laying around. It's going to be something that they value.
And that's, and that's the, that's the part that is always the most difficult, because there is going to be one person that's going to say, well, I don't need that road fixed, so why don't you not do that road? Well, then there's the same, then there's another person that actually lives on that road and says, I need that road fixed. And there are people that use the library, and there are people that don't use the library. And there are senior citizens that are going to use the senior citizen center that may not use the library. No one's going to want the village hall.
Mike doesn't even want it.
That's true.
He works here.
Very unpopular.
But, you know, the reality is, there's a constituency out there that is very parochial into what they want. And then they're all united on what they don't want, and yet it's still an integral piece of the infrastructure of the community. You have, you have to have a, you have to have a village hall, you have to have a place that doesn't flood. Well, I suppose you don't have to, but it would be nice to have a place that doesn't flood. So how do you educate people? You know, many communities have gone so far as looking at open houses and saying, you know, really touring people through and saying, this is what's not functional in the space that we currently have. And it takes time, and it takes effort. I know, you know, when your neighbor to the north went through their city hall project, they worked very hard, they took it to referendum and got it approved. I know the community that I live in basically did the same thing. They walked people through their municipal facilities to explain why it was no longer functional and why they needed to spend the money that they needed to spend. But that, that takes time. Nobody wants to, nobody wants to say that, you know, my taxes are going to go up $357 for these projects. It's a dollar a day. I waste more money going to the bar once a week than I do for that. I probably waste more money than that buying wine every month. My wife drinks a lot. She's not here, so I can blame her.
We'll send her a clip of that at home.
I'm sure. But, you know, so when you, when you look at real dollars, yes, it's an impact, and these are all compounding things, because this is just the debt side. This has nothing to do with the actual operations, the day-to-day operations of the village. So this doesn't include salaries going up for the employees, it doesn't include materials and supplies going up, insurance going up. This is just the debt side. And it doesn't include the operational aspect of a larger library, and it doesn't include the operational aspect of a new senior center, which may or may not be more expensive. You would hope that a new building for a village hall would be more efficient and actually might be less costly. You would hope. But this is just one picture, so you've got the debt side, then you're adding to it the operational side, and now that's just the village. Now you've got the school, you've got, well, VOTAC is pretty much off, but you've got the school, and then you've got the county that are adding as well. And so that's when it starts to hurt the, you know, John Q. Public. Because you can, I can sit here and look at, wow, you know, $357 is a dollar a day. But it's when you start adding all those other things, and now it's $700 increase. And that's just an example, it's not saying, anybody's saying it's going to go up that much, but it's just that piece of it. And so it starts to compound. But you can't worry, and this is what I, in my former life in Mike's chair, I told my board all the time, you can't worry about what the school district's going to do, you can't worry about what the county's going to do, you can only worry about what is necessary to operate the village. And if these are things that are necessary to maintain and operate the village for the best interests of the village, then you need to do them. But you have, you have to do them wisely.
A quick question, you were talking about debts, and then, and then I'm done. If we borrow to build a building, then that building becomes an asset of the village. How does that relate to the equalized value factor that you, that you are referencing in your chart?
It doesn't. It has no impact on your equalized value. It becomes an asset of the community. It becomes value to the community, and there is a trickle-down from that value. It's very hard to quantify. Parks, libraries, a good, you know, municipal building, police station, fire station, all those items are assets to the community. And people choose to go places where the assets are nice. Now, you'll get argument, you'll get people that argue, I moved out here because the taxes are low, and I don't want all that stuff. But sometimes that's kind of a, it's almost a non-starter in terms of an argument, because 20 years ago, somebody moved here and you built the library. So now you have the library, and now you've got all these new people that have moved into the community. They're used to library services, too. You know, like, you know, I mean, if you live in a township and you move to the village, maybe you didn't, I mean, they're getting off pretty cheaply, the people who live in the towns. So, you know, do you take things to referendum? Do you let the voters decide? Yes and no? That's a, a lot of voters don't vote what's best for the community, they only vote what's best for themselves. We're very, you know, as individuals, we're pretty parochial. I mean, look at what schools go through in school referenda. We need to expand our facilities because we've got all these kids coming in. Well, my kids are gone, I'm going to vote, I don't need all that new stuff. I mean, some people will recognize the value, but others do not. And so it makes it very hard to get people to vote for referenda. It's easy when you've got children in the school district to say, yes, I'm going to support that referendum, but once your kids are gone, it becomes a little harder. You have to have that greater good kind of mentality to say that this is worthwhile, but many times to have that greater good mentality, somebody's got to sell you on it. They've got to explain to you why we need this. Why do we need this library? Why do we need a senior center? Why does the village hall need to be replaced? When you look at the building, it looks perfectly nice from the outside. I think it does.
There is a connection between tax rates and the demographics of a community, too, aren't there? In the sense that if taxes are really high, only certain people are going to be able to move into the village?
I would, there probably is a correlation there. There is definitely a correlation in terms of high tax rates and lower development. Once the tax rate gets to a certain level, it starts to slow down growth and development because the taxes are higher. Everybody wants to move to Oregon right now because taxes are low. It's a cheap place to live. I can go build this $300,000 home, and it's cheaper than if I was building the same $300,000 home in the city of Madison, because my annual expenses are going to be that much less. So there's a, I mean, it's a, it's a two-edged sword with having too high of a tax rate. That can cause some damage as well.
Another thought I had was regarding a referendum, that that's a very sure way to gauge the community's receptivity to an increase in taxation.
It is. It's also, can be fraught with danger if you know you need all this stuff. There's a possibility that, you know, you don't get to enough people that actually vote to it. I mean, referenda have a great way of getting both sides of the spectrum out to the polls. The people that absolutely want something are going to show up and vote for it. The people that don't want something are going to show up and vote against it. And it's the 60% of the people in the middle that you've got to try to... And it's the sixty percent of the people in the middle that you've gotta try to, try to reach. Because I, I can almost guarantee for every one person that says we want something, there's probably somebody else that says we don't want that. But yes, referenda is, I mean, that's your closest to, you know, straight democracy, one person, one vote, in terms of whether you're gonna spend some dollars.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
And isn't it true with the referendum, if you, um, have one and it's defeated, it's very difficult to pick that project back up and do anything, unless it's a whole lot less, because people said no?
It ba- yes, it makes it harder. You're, you're basically, uh, if you go to referendum, you're basically in a position where you're saying, we're not gonna do this project without voter approval. And so if you come back even with a smaller project and just say, we're gonna do it.
Yeah.
There's a, you know, you're gonna get cross-eyed with your, your electors.
Yeah.
And even, even then, you know, cause school districts get a pretty bad rap when they come in with a big building project, and then they come back and it gets defeated, and then they come back with another building project for ten or fifteen million dollar, or whatever, less. Sometimes the voters get emboldened and say, well, all we had to do is vote the first one down, and look, it's twenty percent less than it was before. We can vote it down again, and is it gonna be another twenty percent less? We'll just keep dwindling away. And that's, and that's a, that's what you don't wanna do. I think, you know, when you go to referendum, you wanna, I, I, you know, from my perspective in consulting, you wanna be in a position where you think you've put the case out there, or the case has been made of why this needs to happen, and you have a pretty good chance of approving it. You don't wanna go to referendum and just be at the will, because chances are, if people really don't know or understand what you're asking, they're just gonna vote no. Or why it's necessary.
Yeah, the information is critical.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I was interested in Jeff's question about interest rates and, and kind of looking into the future. And I, and I'm looking at your exhibit here and asking myself, what would it look like if you were to illustrate, you know, you know, a delay in moving forward the project for a couple of years, and interest rates are now, you know, above three percent, or something like that? And what would it, will look, and, and you still had to do the project, what's it gonna look like then?
That, that chart doesn't change much. But the cost to the taxpayer goes up because the interest rate is that much higher. So the cost of the project becomes more expensive.
Why doesn't this chart change? I mean, if you've got a-
I mean, oh, oh, you're delaying the borrowing, but that's just the principal outstanding.
Oh, this is, this isn't reflecting the interest expense?
This is just the principal outstanding.
I see.
So when you start looking at, alright, so you delay, uh, one of the projects for two years, and interest rates take a wild swing at our two percent more. If we're borrowing the money at four percent, then now it's six percent, you're paying half again as much interest. So it's a, you know, that, the impact to the taxpayer is gonna be much greater.
So to me, that's kind of an interesting question, though. You talked about, well, it's an extra hundred and eighty dollars to, to move forward with the, the projects using this kind of scenario. If the interest rates are bumped up, you know, it's not a hundred and eighty, it's something else. From a standpoint of educating kind of the community about the choices here, it would be interesting to have a sense of, you know, how do, how do you start thinking about that?
Well, that's, that's the opportunity cost that, uh, was brought up right away. Interest rates are low now. And you, when, you know, when interest rates are low, you borrow as much as you can for as long as you can. When interest rates are high, you borrow as little for as short. Right now, we're still in a relatively short, low-interest-rate market. So you borrow as much as you can for as long as you can to get the projects done. Because the, the reality is that the chances that the waiting two years or four years, the interest rate is gonna be higher.
That's currently the trend now.
That's the, that, that is the trend right now. We, we hit the, 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 the low point of the market basically last August. And it's been climbing ever since. And it climbed, you know, very precipitously from the beginning of October through the election. And then, and, and it really through December, and then it's settled off after that, but it's been ticking up a little bit as we've gone after that. It's been marching forward.
So we've had a lot of discussion about a new municipal building lately, and it's been primarily centered around the library. I think going forward, and you mentioned this, uh, a couple of times in there, we also have to think about other departments. There's lots of things to borrow for besides just a new building. Can you project whenever we, we do a new municipal building, when's the best time to do that as far as?
Last August.
Taxes? How about going forward? We weren't quite ready then.
The best thing you can do is have a plan in terms of when these expenditures are going to occur, so you know. The best thing is to have a pretty good idea of when you're gonna do things and walk into the projects eyes open, knowing what the impact is going to be. You know, you've got capital projects, it's gonna impact your taxpayers on average about a hundred and eighty dollars. The question is, layering the municipal building projects on top of that is gonna add another somewhere between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and eighty dollars on top of that. That's the piece that you get to kind of play around with to determine. And, and sometimes you have to make the decision that maybe we're gonna have to delay a project and be subject to a higher cost, because we're not comfortable about burdening our taxpayers at this level. So, you know, you've gotta, you've gotta set the priority of what's, what's most needed for the community? Library, village hall, senior center, what's the, what's the item that's the, the most necessary? And what does it have to be? Does it have to be built out for twenty years? Can it be built out for a certain period of time with the plan for, you know, with planned expansion? Designed for expansion? Or does it have to be completed all in one shot? I mean, these are, you know, this is, this is an architectural question. Um, and a, to a certain extent, an operational question as well. What do you need for today? And then what do you need for today? And how far do you wanna build out for the future before you have to revisit the item again? Cause in a perfect world, you build out for the next twenty years, and you never have to touch that facility again, except for the consumables, you know, a roof, uh, HVAC system, those kind of things, replacing carpet. You build out for ten years, you know that ten years from now, while you're still probably paying off that debt, you may be back having this discussion again, saying, okay, now we've gotta add the extra square footage onto that facility, because we've grown to that point. And the, the hardest part about that decision is that maybe there's a completely different group of people sitting here that don't even remember the original discussion. But, you know, we also, you know, other side of the coin completely, I have no idea what a library is gonna look like in ten years. Twenty years ago, when I was in, yeah, you know, when I was an administrator, we got our first computer for a library. One. Now, how many do you have? Ten? Higher? Yeah, you, so, I mean, you, you shift, the, 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 the needs of the facility have shifted around. Um, and they may shift dramatically again. I always joke with my clients and say, just buy everybody a Kindle and give them an unlimited supply of Amazon coupons or whatever, and, you know, they can read whatever they want. But there are a lot of people, including, uh, members of my, my family, that they don't want anything to do with those electronic devices. They wanna hold the book. And there are still people that really want that, that, that feeling of the book. Plus there is, you know, libraries' missions have changed over time to reflect, it's the place where people go when they've lost their job, when they're searching for a job, because it's a, it's out of the house, and it's out, and they're at a computer where they didn't, maybe not have access to everything that they needed before. So the mission of libraries has changed over time, and ten years from now, it's probably gonna change again. So it's, it, you know, it's an interesting quandary to be faced with. I mean, you, you could build for another, the next twenty years, and ten years from now, you're going, why do we have all this space? Maybe, maybe not, I don't know. But, you know, people keep writing books. And some of them kinda rotate off the shelves, and then there are others that have been on the shelves for decades. And they continue to be on the shelves, because they're revered or they're a classic. Wish I had all the answers for you, I really do.
Well, I think there's other room, people in this room that are probably expert in libraries. So, yeah. Um, so I have a question. So with your option three, which includes funding of the capital plan and the municipal facilities, the cost of the average homeowner would climb to five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So that's three hundred and two dollar increase, and that's over, I just wrote this down, it's over six years?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
So that's a fifty dollar increase a year.
Yes. It's gonna spike faster than that, though. Because you can't, you can't put a, uh, that's, that's the, that's the peak. The real, the real kick is when you actually build the library.
Well, there, so yeah, so there's one, so it's fifty, except for the one year.
Yeah.
From twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, there's a spike in there.
Yeah.
Other than that, it's fifty.
Yeah, it's roughly.
I think that is a better way to explain it to homeowners. I mean, like this year, when we were looking at our budget, we didn't wanna go over sixty dollar increase. So instead of saying, this is a three hundred and two dollar increase in your taxes, it's really averaging into a fifty dollar increase a year, which is less than we're currently doing. Right? Mike, is that correct or, or not?
Well, for example, if you look just in, from, if, if we don't change anything in seventeen, the borrowing, your taxes on average house would go up seventy-six dollars for debt service. And, um, so then, if you, if you added the, for the operational side, sixty or seventy dollars, now you're increasing taxes over a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty bucks for an average house, which is very unusual for the village.
In twenty seventeen?
In twenty seventeen, correct. Yeah. Right.
Can, at some point, are we gonna talk about the sheet, um, it's in the packet, about how we're the second lowest taxed district in the twelve neighboring municipalities? Can we talk about that?
Sure, whenever you want to.
So I thought that was, that was very interesting. So in the packet, there's this one-page sheet that lists municipalities of Todd Grove, Oregon, Verona, Wanakee, Manona, Middleton, DeForest, Montcore, McFarland, Fitchburg, and Stoughton. And Oregon is the second lowest in the municipality rate, in both the net rate and the muni rate, right? Which could explain why there's lots of houses going up in Oregon right now. I didn't realize this. I thought my taxes were really high, but, wow, they're a lot lower than I've lived in Sun Prairie. Um, you know what I mean? So I think that's a message also that we need to get out to taxpayers that-
You know, my, my first question to the village board, what is an acceptable debt service tax increase? I mean, that, that's, I think-
I don't think that's the right question. I think the right question is, what do we, what services do we need to provide to the village?
Well, it's the same, it's the same.
But you're not putting in a dollar, you're not putting in a dollar number on it. You're putting, what services do people expect that are building houses here? And I think people expect good services, and good services come with a cost. So, because I'm in public relations, I'm leading with the service. And then the bridge is how much it costs. You're leading with how much it costs. And I'm talking about, this is what you're getting for that money. And look how low your taxes have been for all these years, and you probably, like me, didn't even know it.
Yeah.
So Mike, to your point, and I think maybe to Jeannie's point, what would be a number that would put us in the median of our peer group? What would be the dollar increase that would put us in the median of our peer group in the twelve municipality ra-
Well, to get it into that range? We're at, so Jim, we're at five forty-three, and the high is Stoughton at eight forty, eight forty-five, so.
It's at six eighty-one.
But, but that's, that's the average. Are you saying average or median?
Well, if you wanna use average or median.
Average is six eighty-nine.
The middle, yeah. What's the middle equate to in dollars per, per, um, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar home?
If you look on this sheet, Candy figured it out.
Well, but everybody's not looking on the sheet.
Okay, so first, for a house that is valued at two, two fifty-seven in, in Oregon, the difference is three hundred and seventy-five dollars compared, our rate compared to the average rate. Just, just for the village, not the net rate, just the village rate.
So does that mean that we're paying three hundred and seventy-five dollars less than the average municipality?
For the same house.
For that value, and then, and that gets a little tricky, because that's our average value. Doesn't mean that it's gonna be the same value in McFarland, but we had a, you know, just for comparison.
Yeah.
I think those are the numbers we need to be talking about when we go out and we, we tell folks that we, we need to borrow more money than usual. Even when we borrow all this money, we're still gonna be in the middle of this pack for Dane County. Dane County is no longer inexpensive place to live. I think more people are realizing that.
It truly, it truly is a policy question for the board. I, I have my own opinion after being here for a while about what I think people's reaction's gonna be, but it, it's a board decision about what you wanna do with this.
I think reaction's gonna vary based on your age and how soon, how long ago you moved to Oregon. I think the people who grew up here and have lived here for a long time are gonna vote me out of office. I think the people who are building homes right now are gonna be like, whoa, yeah, duh, why aren't they doing that?
Just, if you get, if you get a chance, read the, uh, go back and read a couple of the Fitchburg Stars, because their tax, their tax increase as a reflection of what they built the last couple of years is a big deal in the, in the upcoming election, as an example.
So you could go back, you could go back, though, and read some Stoughton Courier-Hubs, and what you'll find is that your refusal to grow your infrastructure will cause a decrease in people coming to your community. It will create a cycle of depression in your community, where you suddenly can't grow the tax base enough to pay for the things that you need, which is causing you to not be able to grow the tax base enough to pay for the things that you need. So there's, there, you can't do nothing and be okay.
No, I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, but again, I go back to my question, you know, Jeannie is, just, I, I think we gotta talk about what is an acceptable tax increase? What, what can you, what can you increase taxes that, that people, yeah, you're right, our taxes are low, but doesn't mean we can just jump them up, well.
Well, I'll just answer that question. So I, I know that's not fifty dollars a year, but an average of fifty dollars a year over six years is acceptable to me. And I would hope that would be acceptable to the average homeowner. It's not gonna be for everybody, but that's what it comes out to. I understand that there's, there's a jump in that, in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, where, when it's gonna be more than that, I get that. But if it's, that's, that's over six years. That's what we're talking about.
I think, I think what Jim was trying to say too is that, so our CIP only goes out to twenty twenty-two, so as you get out there and it, you know, it, it spikes, then we're gonna, obviously, who's ever here are gonna be continuing to do projects, so you're, yeah. So, so it'd be additional debt service that would be added on, even after the spike for the library, right? Or, or spike for the, the buildings, yeah.
Well, I can imagine that, that the tax rate would probably stay pretty steady. I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna be naive and say, oh, our taxes are gonna go down after we build the library.
Yeah.
They're not.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That's just reality.
Yeah.
What is our obligation to borrow for all three facilities? Why do we need to link all three, the library, the senior center, and the village hall into one project?
Yeah, I, I was gonna say something, I wanted, you know, when, uh, when Lisa and I were preparing this with the department head's help, you know, this CIP you're, you're seeing tonight is, I, I'm trying to draw an analogy. This is what basically Lisa and I see when we get the annual budget from the department heads. We never submit that to the, to the board. The board sees the budget that I, I submit. So you're seeing everything kinda stuffed into five years, or maybe six years. And so we, we didn't go through and tried to move things around. We wanted the board to see all the projects that the department heads were requesting. And I agree with Doug's question, is it realistic to think about that we're gonna do three buildings in a five-year period? That's, that's pretty-
So if I read this correctly, you have, maybe I'm missing something, do you have fifteen million budgeted in for the three buildings? Total fifteen million?
I think something like that, yeah.
That's for the new library in twenty nineteen, and then new municipal building, senior center, village hall in twenty twenty-one. I think that's pretty realistic, if not low.
Well, we talked about the library being probably more like a ten million dollar project.
Yeah, he, and he does have that budgeted in there, but I think the new senior center and village hall, five million is probably low.
Well, see, I think, um, to Doug's point, I think we're talking about three different projects and- Well, see, I think, um, to Doug's point, I think we're talking about three different projects, and the library, to me, there's just no way to improve on the library that we have right now. To me, that's a ground-up, um, reconstruction. And the library is tied in with so many different sources of funding that that's a municipal project. I just don't see it any other way. Uh, the senior center, on the other hand, I could see that as a public-private partnership where a developer would come in and build the shell, and the only thing we'd be responsible for is building out the inside.
Oh, is that what you're thinking with the five million? Okay.
Yeah, and I, so then, yeah, so the, there's a ten million dollar library, but with only eight, eight million being borrowed, or whatever, something like that. So that, just right, we go back to the civic campus plan that then we would sell the, uh, library property and the senior center property, developer, we sell it to the developer, they build us a shell for the senior center. So then that two to three million dollars is really to finish the soft cost for the senior center. And then we just sort of added two million dollars for the village hall. Does that mean we're, we're staying here and we're fixing the heating? You know, we didn't, we just sort of plugged that number in.
Well, and one other thought on the senior center, not that we're having a full conversation about it, but at that point, the senior center generates tax revenue for the village as well.
That, that property does.
Right.
Right. Correct.
So completely different project.
Because we took the church property off. The idea is if we put that property back on the tax, or on the tax road instead, as a replacement.
Yeah.
Yep.
And we're not talking about the youth center, but, and I talked to Mike about this briefly, and I haven't had any conversations with anybody else, but you know, I think in the same way that we were able to pull together as a community and build a food pantry, I think we can pull together as a community and build the youth center. I don't think that needs to be a municipal project. Matter of fact, I'm confident of it. So that leaves us with the village hall. And, um, you know, we've talked about a lot of options for the village hall, and I think two million dollars, I mean, if you're just talking about blowing out the inside walls and re, and reconfiguring it, that two million dollars probably gets you a pretty far away. And I, you know, I don't, in my heart of hearts, I don't see, this is a beautiful building, and, and I don't see leveling the building and starting, starting from scratch. But if we did, there'd be another opportunity for a public-private partnership again, much like what was proposed on Jefferson previous to Span Re.
Yep.
Where the village could, could get in with a private developer. And, and like Seagull Commons, the village could occupy the ground floor, the private developer could put low amount of income rentals above, generate tax revenue for the village. It helps offset the cost. So to Doug's point, I think it's, it's three different projects, and right now, I think to your, to your point, Jim, is what's the most important thing that needs to get done right now? And, you know, I, I just don't, I don't see any way that it makes sense to delay the construction of the library right now. It's not gonna get cheaper. We got the land already. We've got impact fees to spend. Um, to me, that's the, that's the most urgent priority that we have on the table, and I think a good private-public partnership could pull the senior center right behind it without putting too much of a burden on the village, and that's what you've planned for, is, is what I'm hearing you say.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I mean, if, if we could end up, at the end of the process, have two buildings that are public-private partnerships, that would be, that'd be the best.
And at the end of the day, we will still be taxing below the middle of our peer group. Even with the proposed projects and the proposed financing, we'll still be the, maybe the third or fourth cheapest place in the county to live.
It depends on, it also depends on how our assessed value, how, you know, you know, for example, when you see, which is kind of interesting, is I was pretty impressed how low Verona is in Wanake. Even, even though Verona went through a massive, uh, they built a new library, city hall, police station.
Well, Epic is coming off the tiff too.
Well, that, as I'm saying, their, their value also went up, and Wanake is the same way. Their taxes, you know, for a, a high-growing community are, are, are attractive. They really are. Six bucks a thousand. So... So we don't run out of time here? Because I know we have to end at seven fifteen, otherwise we'll lose quorum. I think Jim, Jim wants, Jim needs some direction on the seventeen borrowing, and there's a, there's a question I had on the agenda. We could kind of go through that.
I'd say we borrow as much as we can for as long as we can. That was Jim's recommendation. I fully believe in it. So that's, uh, option three?
That really is option three, yeah. And that, and, and option three causes you to work through the USDA World Development Program to look at that forty-year financing. Because, I, I mean, you're building a building that's gonna be here that long.
But it's also the most costly option as well.
Well, it's the most costly when you talk about the amount of interest over time, but it's the least costly when you talk about the impact per household per year. So it's kind of the same, like, if I, if I put my house on a fifteen-year mortgage, it's gonna cost me less at the end of fifteen years, but it's gonna double my payment. And it's all about, you know, are you trying to keep your monthly payments down, or are you trying to keep your overall cost down? And what I'm hearing Jim say is, is the sweet spot's probably a little bit of both.
Yeah, and you don't have to just make that absolute decision this evening. The, the one piece that you do need to decide this evening is whether the land purchase
Yeah.
uh, is included in the two thousand seventeen borrowing.
Yeah, so I, I was gonna ask, because I, again, I'm gonna lose, lose quorum here today. If we could maybe just focus on seventeen now and then, then go through the agenda, Steve, would that be possible?
Yeah, yeah. If you wanna do three B, is that right?
Yeah, so, so what we would need is the board to authorize Jim to prepare the resolutions, right, Jim, for the April tenth board meeting? And what Lisa are, are asking or recommending, that the board consider, uh, authorizing additional advance of forty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars from the general fund to help pay for the acquisition of the former church property. The general fund has already advanced sixty thousand dollars in six, twenty sixteen for the closing. Therefore, rather than borrowing eight ninety, we'd borrow, you know, seven eighty-two plus interest for the former church property. And then if, if it is decided the former church property is the appropriate location for the new library building, the village board have the opportunity to request the use of impact fees from the library board to help pay for the property. And then, we would then reimburse the general fund with that amount, which is a hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Village attorney Dragney is verifying that we could use impact fees in this manner, so we're still checking on that. But the, if the, if the board would decide not to locate the library, then we would just reimburse ourselves that hundred and seven thousand dollars in the twenty eighteen borrowing and just put that money back into the general fund fund balance. And as Jeff was talking about the impact fees, we do need to use a hundred and seven thousand by November of this year as a balance of about two hundred and fifty-four thousand of library impact fees without interest right now sitting in the account. If we don't, we don't use that hundred and seven, we have to start refunding it, but however, in my opinion, the use of the impact fee should not be a determining factor for the board in regards to the location of the new library. You're talking about, you know, building a ten million dollar library, a hundred thousand dollars is, I, I think you should just really make your decision based on the location of the li, of the library.
So I, I'll make the motion, um, to direct Jim to prepare the borrowing. I, you're gonna have to couch this however you want, but I believe that the Methodist Church property is the highest and best, the highest and best use of the Methodist Church property is the library. I believe that the library should go there. So to the extent that you would use impact fees to pay down the debt, that's something I would be in favor of.
What we're, we're asking for is, is actually, may, maybe it's a two-part motion, is to authorize Jim to prepare the resolution and then authorize us to advance another forty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars from the general fund to help pay for the acquisition.
Yeah, well, you want me to make those one at a time?
You could, it's up to you, Jeff.
So I'll make the motion to, um, authorize Jim to prepare the borrowing for the April tenth meeting, the borrowing resolution.
Second.
Okay, so you're doing those two different motions?
Yeah, I figured we'd have to call the first before I made the second.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so are the motions second to authorize Jim to make, prepare the resolutions for borrowing for the April tenth board agenda? Questions or discussion on that?
Does that oblige us to borrow?
No. It's the first step in the process. Uh, on April tenth, you will have a series of resolutions, one being for the issuance of general obligation notes. Uh, and then a second series for the issuance of, uh, general obligation corporate purpose bonds, um, which sets you up to sell, I think our meeting is on May
Fourth, I think.
Fourth or fifth. Uh, that would be the day that the sale would actually occur. Um, this is just the first step, uh, in the process uh, in terms of adopting those initial resolutions.
And Doug, this is only for twenty seventeen. This is only for the prop, the
Right.
the money for the property. So we're only talking about seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars.
No, no, this, this is to borrow for twenty seventeen on these sheets.
You would be, you would be borrowing, if you look at page two of the, the handout. You would be borrowing, uh, a million, five hundred and eighty thousand dollars of notes, which covers, uh, street maintenance, uh, park improvements, public works equipment, uh, public, or police department, uh, equipment, and, uh, materials, uh, some public works, building improvements, and then, uh, the hundred and thirty-nine thousand, I think that was, I'm drawing a blank on exactly what that was for. And then you would be selling a series of bonds, which would be for the purchase of the Methodist Church, um, for the water utility, the sewer utility, and then tax increment district number three projects. So the total borrowing would be just under three point seven million dollars.
And so what, what I'm asking is that, rather than borrowing the eight ninety, we borrowed the seven eighty-two, Jeannie.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion on that.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, so additional questions or comments, sir? So we have the motion second to authorize a process for the two thousand seventeen borrowing resolutions, which will be on the April tenth board agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So Jeff, your next one?
Um, my second resolution would be to authorize Mike to advance forty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars from the general fund to help pay for the acquisition of the former church property.
Second.
Questions or discussion on that? I think, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. So then you want us to go to, anything more on C and D, Mike?
Well, I, I, like I said, I, we're gonna, we're gonna continue to re, review this at future meetings and, um...
That's what I thought.
I would just kind of hold it for a day.
Okay, so that takes us to E, creating TIF number five. Possible board action, approved LRS proposal for tax incremental financial analysis and assistance in the range of thirty-five hundred to forty-five hundred for the creation of TIF number five.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments you need to make here, Jim, or questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item F, uh, closing TIF two, an affordable housing issue, possible board action, approved LRS proposal of eighteen hundred dollars for closing TIF number two.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Jim, can I ask you a question? Did you get a chance to talk to the...
I did.
Okay.
And they were very, uh, non-committal.
Okay.
You, you, uh, their, their recommendation would be that you do not distribute the funds prior to the actual closure of the district. And that was more of a confusion response. Um, I do not necessarily concur that I think there is a, there's a, there's a roadmap that we can take to distribute a good portion of the excess funds um, prior to the actual closure, but we have to leave enough in the fund so that when we actually do the final auditing, we know the distribution, what the distribution, there's gonna be enough to make the distributions whatever they may be.
So what we're talking about is we're trying to have the best of both worlds. We're trying to have the use of the, the funds that the, that we're gonna receive in the school district we receive, but leave the TIF open into, into eight, eighteen, which then we would take all that increment and put it in, we would create an affordable housing account. And we're not sure we can do that.
You, you can do it.
Oh, okay.
You can do the affordable housing piece. The mechanics of how we close the district is, is at question. And you can, you have to adopt a resolution saying that you're gonna keep the TIF district open for one more year for affordable housing.
Mm-hmm.
For a period of time. All you have to do is keep that district open or through May sixteenth of this year. Because May fifteenth is the cutoff for collecting increment in two thousand eighteen.
That's true, yeah.
Once May sixteenth occurs, you can adopt a resolution, closing the tax increment district, and start the whole closing process. That closing process requires that an audit be, a final accounting, an audit be done for the tax increment district within six to twelve months of the adoption of that resolution. You could still get the, the, uh, audit done in two thousand sixteen and close the district. The hard part is going to be, is that we don't necessarily know what the absolute increment's going to be collector, two thousand seventeen, collected in two thousand eighteen. For the affordable housing piece.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
But there's a roadmap for you to be able to do it.
Okay.
But something's better than nothing, right?
Yeah, that's why I'd say, Jeannie, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because I mean, going back to Jeff's comment about the senior center and the affordable housing, if we have even a couple hundred thousand dollars as an incentive for a developer for affordable housing uh, as part of the senior project, that would be, that'd be very nice, yeah.
We do have to, in that resolution, identify how we're gonna spend the money. Or the, the plan.
Do, do you have a sample on, Jim?
No.
You don't, okay. Matt, do you have one?
I haven't had one, uh, yet. I haven't had a community, uh, make this election yet. Um, do you know of any, of any that have you?
Manona, Van de Wollton, yes, Manona has it.
So we can, we can see what they did.
There, there's somebody, there, there are a few out there that have done it, so it's not...
Scott, uh, from Van de Wollton, yes, Manona.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we should go ahead, we're gonna go ahead and prove the... Okay.
Any questions, comments over here? Okay, so we have the motion second to approve LRS proposal of eighteen hundred dollars for closing TIF number two. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Are you done?
I'm done.
Thanks, Jeff.
Look how fast he's leaving.
I can't, I'm gonna stick around for him.
That's great. Okay, item four, public appearances are not listed tonight. Item five, police department items. Item A, discussion, possible action, approval of two police department policies. Uh, one is evidence processing, and then also the field training and evaluation program.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And Brian, thanks for bringing those forward.
Oh, thank you.
Nice to have a couple at a time.
Yeah, this should, this should be it for a while, so this, this kind of fulfills the accreditation process.
And we do appreciate your work on these.
Yeah.
Obviously, they're complex and lengthy, and it's, uh, I'm sure it takes a lot of time.
It, it takes a little bit of effort, you bet.
Nice to get us up to date also. Are there any questions on these? Just one comment before we vote on this, that, uh, as I read these, it struck me how, how complex police work is that most of us don't even realize until you read what, what this goes through. There's, there's a huge amount of stuff that, uh, doesn't happen from riding around in the car.
Well, absolutely, and I think a lot, a lot of it has to do with the response of the courts, so we, we try to get things in place. We're doing things right.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a com, complex job, there's no doubt. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B, discussion, possible action, authorizing police department to destroy tasers for the purchase agreement.
So moved.
Second.
It's kind of a normal thing.
Yep, this was just, uh, as part of the agreement, when we bought the new tasers, um, they gave us a discount, but we have to destroy the old ones, and so that process is pretty simple. We just destroy the outer carrier and the battery to them.
Okay. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item six is village attorney and village administrators report. Item A, discussion, possible action regarding ordinance number seventeen dash zero eight and ordinance to amend section point seven zero four one relating to speed limits on Brook Street. The recommended motion is to waive the first reading of ordinance number seventeen dash zero eight.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And I know we have at least one person, I'd just like to speak this, so Amy, do you wanna come forward and speak to this, and any questions that you would like to ask? No, you're fine. You, you take the time you need, please.
Sorry, I missed the last meeting. I wanted to be here.
So did some of us.
Don't want bussing with you.
I was here.
I remember at one of the meetings that I was at, it was stated that, um, if it were brought before a judge, that you had to have a good reason why the speed limit was lower on that street than the other ones. I looked through the village ordinances, and when the speed limit was made fifteen, it's written right in there that it was made fifteen because of the park. That should be good enough reason for a judge, if that's what was said then. I've spoken to probably upward of a couple of hundred people, just when I'm up at Bill's, talking to, whether it's cashiers, bag boys, customers, when I'm at Quick Trip, when I'm talking to my neighbors. They all won't come here to talk with me, but they're all, and they're just appalled that someone wants to raise the speed limit. We all find that a really bad, like, choice. Raising the speed limit on a street that has that many children, that many, that much parking, I can't see where, I can't see where they're thinking this is a good idea. I understand that's your point of view. I just don't understand why it is.
We're not, well, we're not really raising the speed limit. We're keeping it fifteen miles an hour when, when most of the necessity takes place, and that's when kids are present.
Now, uh, the way I was, it was explained to me before is that, that's when the children are present for school, in the morning and the afternoon. What about all summer long? What about every night during... What about every night during softball season, soccer season? What about all the kids then?
Well, Glenn. We could answer that, Holly's email, or Holly's memo really explains it well, 'cause I, I had the same question, that's, in the same.
Yeah, so my understanding is that when children are present means when children are present. It's not limited to, you know, when children are present, like, just in the morning on their way to school, or after, it's any time children are present.
Okay, 'cause I was told differently.
Yeah, that, that's what the, that's the legal issue. Now, of course, police officers who are enforcing this are gonna have to exercise some judgment about.
Right.
How they're going to apply that. But they certainly would have the authority if, if in the area where it's signed, you know, when children are present, if there are children, even if there's one child present, if that officer decides, under these circumstances, I'm gonna, I'm gonna issue this citation, I think it's a legal citation.
Okay, that, that's one thing that's helpful.
Yeah.
The other thing was, it came to an ordinance so quickly that, and like I said, because I missed the one meeting, I didn't know that, we, a couple of us have talked about what, what if anything can we do to stop it from becoming an ordinance that quickly? Is there any chance that we can do a, now the words just went right out of my head, a petition to stop it? And if, if the answer is yes, how, I, I have no clue what to do here.
To stop the ordinance change from taking effect?
Mm-hmm.
Well, um, yeah, there isn't a, a legal process per se for you to do that, but I mean, you, you can ask these folks tonight, what, you can ask them to stop it or slow it down, you and, and you can submit petitions and so on.
Okay.
They're not binding per se, I mean, you can make the request, and then it's up to the board to decide.
Okay.
What to do.
Okay. That is my request, that it not be made so quickly. I, I think the, getting the new speed thing and having it on our street was wonderful, I loved it.
The speed trailer?
It, it was awesome that time. People were slowing down, some of them were racing just because you could tell that they were watching it to see how high it would go, the younger kids.
That happens, yeah.
Yeah, and I expected that, but it did slow down a lot of people, and just from talking about it here, being in the observer, there have been a lot of people that still are saying, really, the speed limit's fifteen? I always thought it was twenty-five.
Yeah.
And I've always gone that fast, I slowed down now. So a lot of them have slowed down, just by bringing it out in the open, but I'm still requesting that you not do it.
Okay.
I, I think it's important to, for you and the, the other residents that live on the street to realize is that we're not disregarding the children's safety, that's not something that we, we wanna do, and, and anyone else that lives there. Our thought process was, is that when we need it most, to have the, the speed limit lowered, that's what these signs do, and then the rest of the time, when there's no one there, people can drive twenty-five miles an hour like they do on the rest of the village, and, and not have any kind of burden of trying to slow down to that speed limit, and unnecessarily getting themselves a ticket. So that, that's really the purpose of this.
Okay, I, I understand that, it just seems like raising, it just doesn't, it seems counterintuitive. Why would you hire?
But my point is, if we're not raising when kids are present, that's the whole point, yeah.
And, but like, like myself, and like I was told before, a lot of people assume that it means in the morning when they're going to school, or, and at night when they get out of school.
Well, that's an educational piece that we can get out there as well.
That would be another great thing.
And, and I think while we're educating the public, we should just, not to be cheeky, but we should remind them that anytime they see a sign that says slow down when children are present, it means when children are present. They don't get to choose.
Yeah.
Whether it's the right time of day.
I agree.
And, and just to address the perception, 'cause I think perception's really important in, in everything, and the reality, and honestly, I can't remember, but Mike, can you tell me how long we have been discussing this issue, and including, 'cause I think they came to planning at one point, or public works?
Personnel.
Personnel?
Yeah, I think personnel twice, I think.
But when did that start?
I didn't bring my, I didn't bring my file down, sorry, I, I had it on my desk.
Eight or ten months ago?
Yeah.
It was October, well, it was even before then, I'm sorry, it was.
Was it, was it attached? No, I, sorry, Jeff, I filed on.
So, I think it's important that we, I, I appreciate what you're saying about feeling as if this has been rushed, but my feeling is actually the opposite. I feel that of all the issues that we debated in the village, this is probably the second longest behind the dumpster issue. That's my perception, but most important is what's the reality, and I think the reality is that we've been discussing this somewhere between six and eight months, both in committee and at the board, and we've studied it with the trailer, matter of fact, we bought a trailer so that we could study it, and, and we brought that data back, and we discussed the data. So this really has been a very thoroughly vetted process, in my opinion, and, and that's very different than your perception, which I respect.
I agree that it has been a long process to he, to this point, but the ordinance was just last month, where it came to that point, to decide on making it an ordinance, rather than choosing any of the other options that were available or suggested.
So we, August of 2016, it was introduced, the item, but you realize it's not, the ordinance is not being adopted tonight, you realize that?
No, the way I understood it was that it was gonna be read tonight and next month, and then it's a done deal.
Well, it has to be approved.
Yeah.
And that's the process, timing for, to approve it, but it still has to be voted on and approved.
I see.
The board's motion was to have something that we could, I mean, the ordinance allows us to have something to send out to your neighbors, to say, this is what the board's considering.
Okay.
And so that, so now that was the board's direction, is we have introduced the ordinance tonight, it, I think the waving's gonna, first reading's gonna pass, and then, then we're gonna, now, between now and April tenth meeting, we're gonna send it out to your neighbors and say, this is what the board's considering at the April tenth meeting.
Okay, all right.
So I have a couple of questions, Amy. It seems to me like right now, there are no athletic events, it seems to me that twenty-five works fine, except when kids are there. I mean, I drive down that street a lot coming here, and there's, there's no other traffic, there's no people around, there's nothing.
It really depends on the time of day.
Yeah.
It's a pretty busy street.
Yeah, and that's the whole community.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you go down Oak Street, at school, starting and stopping, and it's amazing how much traffic.
I know, and with the youth center where it is, and the park, both parks, it's crazy that, that general area.
Yeah, so, and I've mentioned a couple of things before, one would be having no parking on the south side of the street, we'd have to check with neighbors on that, is that something that you think we should pursue?
I, I still, I still believe, yes, that that's something that would be a good idea.
Yeah, and then, I also personally like the idea of temporary speed bumps in this, during the sports season.
I do, too.
Then that takes care of Mr. Rowell's concern that the plow's gonna hit him, 'cause it's gonna snow in the summer.
Right.
So, yeah, theoretically, I don't think it will, but, so I guess, I don't know what the rest of you think, if I'm only one, then I'll drop it, but personally, I'd like to see if other people think we should, have Jeff check out some temporary speed bumps, and let's see what they cost, how they work, and get some recommendations from communities that have handled those. I, you know, I, when I go down there during softball season, you know, it's dark most of the time, there's cars full on both sides, there's people all over, I'm gonna drive fifteen whether it says that or not.
Yeah.
Just because I don't feel safe to go faster than that. And if we have speed bumps, most everybody's going to, and there'll be the occasional one that wants to whack them and hear the noise, but they won't do it very much.
Right.
I think I'd like to make a broader discussion, though, and talk about Oak Street as well. You know, when the soccer tournaments are going on both sides of the street, there's parking on both sides of the street, we've talked about that.
Yeah.
Two, you know, I crawl, but even at crawling, I'm looking left and right, 'cause kids could come out from either way. So, me personally, I'd rather take this kinda one at a time, and I don't agree that we should have speed bumps there if the speed limit's fifteen miles an hour. However, if, if the ordinance gets passed, and the speed, speed limit goes to twenty-five miles an hour, I think we should talk about this and Oak Street, and, and not just this street.
Okay, so, just the general concept, have Jeff check out temporary speed bumps, they can be used during nice weather, when athletic events are going on, and streets are crowded?
Doesn't hurt.
Do, do we want, am I only one, or?
No, I think that's a good idea.
When you think, when you talk about temporary, are you thinking of something that's installed in the spring and removed in the fall, or are we talking about temporary, as far as we have a tournament coming up this weekend, let's lay it out there and have it for the tournament weekend?
In my mind, they go in, they stay there till the sports seasons are done.
Till, till the sports season.
So it's probably, it's probably May first, till, what, into September, mid-October, I don't know.
From the time you stop wearing white till the time you start wearing white. Oh, wait a minute.
I have that, just so you know. Questioned because of you.
Amy, maybe you can let us know when you start wearing white?
Maybe you can make it concurrent.
Sorry, I can't control it.
I know.
I try, it doesn't work.
Maybe you could make it concurrent with the opposite side parking, you know?
So would you feel better about a twenty-five speed limit if we had temporary speed bumps during the sports seasons?
If, if you had to, yeah, if the speeds bump, the speed bumps would make it a little bit better, I, I still just feel like it's, our whole street is just not safe, we, which nobody drove on it, but, um, that would be perfect.
We're not gonna close it.
Damn.
So, okay, so we'll proceed that way, and have Jeff check that out, and come back to public safety meeting, or public works meeting.
Well, actually, Jeff, would you have that checked out for the April tenth meeting?
By the April tenth meeting, sure.
Good idea, yeah.
The other question that someone asked me is, why can't we put the, you know, you've got the lighted, um, speed limit signs with the light going around them?
Oh, the flashing.
There's been a lot of villages that, towns, villages, cities that have those, maybe people would notice them more if they were lit? Are they just too costly?
Well, I mean, there, there's a cost component of installing them in the first place, and then there's the ongoing cost and maintenance, and, and we've, what we've found is, most of those are solar activated, or solar run, and it's just invariably, even with the ones we've installed in the village already, a couple calls a year, at least, on each one, that they're, they're not working, or need new batteries, or, or something like that, so, and, and what we've noticed, like, the one out on, right in front of Hitching Post Park, that's kinda one of the ones that you can push and it lights up around.
Mm, yeah.
Those aren't nearly as effective as other things we've used in the village.
All right, that was just something that they've said to me.
So we will check out the, the temporary speed bumps, and, and I don't, how we proceed on the no parking, maybe that's, something goes to all the neighbors, or, is that the way to do that?
We'll have to, 'cause that would have to be under an ordinance as well.
Well, before we change parking, we always survey the neighbors.
Right, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Well, if, does the board want us to include that in the information that go?
You know, again, if it's fifteen miles an hour, I don't think we have a parking on both sides issue, so it all depends on me and which way the vote goes. If we vote twenty-five, I don't disagree that we should look at whatever else we can do.
Okay.
But if we vote fifteen, I think that's excessive.
Okay.
And Amy, I would like, you know, I rec, I recognize and appreciate the fact that you speak on behalf of many people, but I'd like you to let them all know how important it is to come and be a voice.
I have been trying.
But the reason I'm saying this is because if you come back by yourself at the next vote, I'm going to assume that you're the only one for whom this is an issue.
I understand that, and that's what I keep telling them.
So I need to hear, tell them to blow up my email box, copy me on it, it's, what is it, jabudrow@vill.org.
It's on the website.
It's on the website, tell them to blow up the email box, tell them to blow up Mike's email box, tell them to come here.
Yeah, I already irritate him enough.
Yeah, if they go to Mike, it comes to all of us, so.
It's really important to me to know what the residents think, and especially the residents that are being impacted.
I will see what I can do, I will keep trying.
Okay.
Maybe forget what I was just gonna ask. Oh, if it does become no parking on one side, what are we gonna do during the winter?
That's gonna be a problem.
That is, because.
Yes, I mean, there's things to consider, that's what we're talking.
There's no parking for another block or two.
That's what we're talking, it's parking lot over by the park, I don't know, but those are things to consider on looking at no parking.
All right.
And maybe that's just in the summer, when that's not an issue then.
Jeff, just to add to like what you're talking about on, on Oak Street, one of our plans is actually to try to develop parking in that area between the Oak Street and the creek.
Those two are their lots, yeah, those two are their lots.
Yeah, two additional lots, where we could then move a lot of that parking off of Oak Street, and either then create maybe a no parking on one side of that in the future, but that, again, that's part of our capital improvement plan, and we're in a circular discussion here with that then, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, so we have ordinance seven point zero four one for speed limits on Brook Street, waive the first reading of that ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, so that'll come back in the next meeting. Item B, the village board will adjourn in a closed session during the meeting pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section nineteen point eight-five-one-E, to discuss possible use of tax increment financing on TIF number three for the Jefferson Crossing project.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
State.
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Brenhauer?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and we'll go next door.
Yeah.
And be back.
Project had a very good meeting with our financial advisor, and we are on track to, we think, have a final development agreement ready for board action on April tenth. We did have a chance to review the structure and the numbers tonight, and we think we're getting very close to, you know, having that agreement finalized and ready for, ready for board action. And Brett, you know, I've sent a draft to your attorney, I've still got some exhibits to work on, and so we've got some details, but I, I think it's going, going well. And with, any comments from you, or, okay?
Just, just real quick, thank you for that information and the feedback, our attorney did get back to us on a couple of questions that we got back to him on, so he's working on it as well.
Okay.[1635.98]